...from members of the community who want to become involved in the direction of a library which fits the 21st century.
The goal of the Lifelong Learning Committee would encompass the things the Library Board does now that still need to be achieved. And in addition, because not only are we looking at the 21st century, we're looking onward in our library, many people expressed an interest. There's a note of many groups that are listed here, not all of which may want to send someone, some may, some may not. I think that it would be important for the contacts to be made through staff so that they could select a time, a date, which would be appropriate for them. But also several groups that supported the passage of the library millage indicated that they'd like to see the strategic planning process. And also, the library director and the city manager, of course, said, "Of course, we need to have a strategic planning process for the library." And so it'd be nice to have the input. I appreciate your work in writing this up and bringing it forward because I think there were some people in the community that were a little bit dismayed that we'd be doing away with the Library Board. They saw that portion and they didn't see that we're going to make it better. The goal is to make it better and actually serve the purposes. Other comments? Councilwoman Bell to me.
Madam Mayor, a library does much more now than it did 40 or 50 years ago. And that's why I support the breadth of this committee. I think it's important for the future of our community that that be recognized and that these partnerships and connections become solidified within the community. I have a little angst of an amorphous committee, particularly, Mayor, you said that this committee would ultimately take up some of the responsibilities of the Library Advisory Board that have been left undone. The library does have its own millage. And although I do not expect that any board other than us deals with final allocation of any millages in this community, I do think that you can't have good input on money and programming without some stability within your committees. And so I would request that as management flushes out the mechanics of this, that there be some stability of committee membership built into the process.
In other words, to serve a term from more than just six months or...
And also, I agree with Mayor Protam Kerwin on the self-selection because we don't want these appointments to come from just the library director or just the Friends of the Troy Public Library. We want the community represented in this in the broadest manner possible. Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protam Kerwin.
And just a point, that the current Library Advisory Board have all been members of the Friends at one time.
Absolutely.
You could simply continue on Friends of the Troy Public Library and a volunteer in this as well. Again, there may be certain aspects or certain tasks that members at large might find more interesting, the strategic plan or a different task, and so some may fall off and some may go. But we need to understand that ebb and flow. And I think it's just terribly important that we look back to the Futures, the Vision 2020 document. We have, in fact, incorporated many. Why we never did this, I'm not sure, but it was a shall. If you go back to pages 27, 28, 29, and 30 of the 2020 document, I think that there were very, very good ideas. And it took a while, but here we are.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Fleming.
Just a question, would we have a limit on the number of people that would serve on this committee, or would there be subcommittees of this Lifelong Learning Committee?
That really would be up to the library director. And I'm sure we've all served on something that has become so big that it's become a daytime and a nighttime. What a problem to have. But I think what was the intention in the document, and then what I wrote down, was to be all-inclusive. And we know from our community conversations, and Councilmember Fleming did attend some of the community conversations, you know how that was, how sometimes we would have the same people at the same one and then other times different? The idea is to try to be as broad as possible and to listen as much as possible. That was a pledge that we've made to the community, and it's a pledge we need to uphold.
And I should note that we're discussing this tonight, but we have discussed this actually three or four times as a council, as we've talked about things over the past several years. And of course, we began when we had the Futures Study, but it has come up several times.
Mayor.
Councilman Slater.
I did support Councilman Harolak's position originally until I, and then when I looked at the work that Mayor Protam Kerwin put into this and the resolution, and I looked at the Futures, this just looks like a much better idea. And the other idea was old school. This looks like new school to me. It looks like a good idea, and I changed my mind, and now I am in favor of it.
Further discussion of the motion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis.
I just also wanted to say that I support this resolution. I know we have been talking about this at the table. I think that it's very important that we expand the boundaries from which we're going to gather information from people. I think that when we were doing community conversations throughout this year, something that we heard from both sides of the fence was that people wanted to have input on what the library was going to mean to the community moving forward. So I think that opening it up and at the same time giving some parameters in here about groups and individuals that we'd like to hear from, I think is important because it shows that we're expanding the boundaries. But I do think that this specific language in here that lists where we think we would find good representatives within our community is something that we should use as direction when we're going to be building. In terms of going out to the community, this is going to be something brand new. Like Councilman Slater said, this is new school. So obviously, it's going to be something that we want to promote within the community. It's not our regular, old way of seeking out people for boards and committees. This is something new, and I think that it's something that the community is really going to embrace. So in terms of getting the information out, obviously, this list right here gives us a very good start. And then all of us as spokespeople for the community will be able to seek people out and give them that information so that they can get involved in this new way. So I'm definitely in support of this.
Actually, Councilwoman McGinnis, we did reach out to all of these groups when Troy's Futures first started back when, and we had all the subcommittees. What's different is we're asking these people from these groups to come forward for the Lifelong Learning Committee to deal specifically with things that have to do with the library, but also with lifelong learning. And some of the folks that are listed here served on other committees within the Troy Futures report. But again, just as reiterated over and over again with Michigan Municipal League and National League of Cities, reaching out to the entire community should be a cyclical thing. It should be an ongoing procedure that we do and do it in different ways. And that's been documented in communities that have had successful programs because they did do that. And so I'm pleased to see, and I think that's what this is. Okay, the vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Councilman Harolak?
You know, I don't have any objectives, I mean, excuse me, objections to this, but I do think it could be better. And one of the concerns that I have is that it isn't formalized. And if we want management to do this, I'm not even sure that we need this resolution, but I suppose it's nice to have. So I would rather it actually be formally adopted by the city council, but I do also want to make sure that the meetings of the organization are very accessible and well-promoted so that folks can easily attend it, which of course would involve advance notice and postings and those things. And I have no doubt the library director will make sure that happens. Is there any particular reason why these groups were listed? Because I mean, we could, there are a number of constituencies that aren't listed. And when we start listing constituencies, then the question becomes, if you find a constituency or two and they're not listed, then why aren't they listed? I think what we want to do, and the focus really needs to be on the broadest representation of the community at large so that there is proper representation across the spectrum.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis.
I think that those actually came directly from the language that was in the Futures Study.
Page 27.
So I think that they almost mirrored exactly. There were a couple that looked like they were slightly different because we may not have those committees anymore, but in general, I think they were all taken directly from that page 27.
Page 27.
And additionally, page 28, which listed some of the community partners. So I think they were all included. I didn't get the impression that it was supposed to be exclusive of anything that's not on here, but I think that's where the direction came from.
Madam Mayor. Further discussion? Oh, Mayor Protam Kerwin.
I just wanted to, and the idea of a cardholder and a non-cardholder, we really do want to have input from people who have the cards and who don't. And I thought that that was simply, so that wasn't included on page 27, but the rest really did honor it. And so I hope we have your support.
Okay, the vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Harolak?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. The new council may want to formalize the committee after the committee gets going, you know, and, I mean, after people are selected, et cetera. Okay, under council comments, I'd like to go first for council comments. First of all, all of you received the press release from the Troy Police Department that the Troy Police Department Pistol Team won the ninth consecutive State Governor's Cup, which was held in September 9, 2011. And the details of that press release are quite impressive, the score. And being that this is the ninth time that our Police Department Pistol Team has won the first place, they should be commended for that and for keeping up their skills and for representing our community well. I'm sure that their colleagues in the field know that they're exceptional, and we also commend them for that. Sometimes they even come and bring the trophy, so maybe they'll bring it in one of these meetings and we can see it. On a sadder note, I was represented again for the 11th year. The Troy Beaumont Hospital has had the Silent Witness Commemorative Service where they have music, informational speaker of someone who has had domestic violence happen in their family. And this year, the person who spoke was a young woman who works at Beaumont, and it was her mother that was the victim of domestic violence. They invite the mayors from the cities that serve Rochester Hills, Sterling Heights, and Troy. And it's always very moving and thought-provoking of what we can do to prevent domestic violence. And one of the ways is by not being silent. And so by bringing it up tonight, I mentioned to the community that there are many avenues for help in that area. And Beaumont Hospital has all kinds of literature, information, and people that actually help with it. Some of the names that we read today, I was especially moved by a family, an entire family in Grand Rapids that was killed, the wife, the daughter, and the parents, the grandparents of the child, in a domestic violence situation. It's very sad. There were no names listed for Troy, but there sometimes are unknown domestic violence incidents that occur. And if people are going through that or know of someone that's going through that, I would encourage them to contact the folks, and I'm going to encourage them to contact Troy Beaumont because I know they have a program and tell people about what to do, how to receive help and everything. So I think it's important for all of us not to shun the subject and think that it doesn't happen because it could happen anywhere. And so I mentioned that it was an honor to represent the community again there. Not all the things we get to attend are of a happy nature, but they certainly are a need in the community, and that's one of the things that we do is to serve the community. Does anyone else have any council comments on items?
Small one, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protam Kerwin.
Just wanted to point out that we have four goals in our, and the third goal is build a sense of community. What we did tonight really did build that. In the goals, it says, involve all stakeholders in communication and engagement activities, encourage volunteerism, and new methods of community involvement. And more and more, this council needs to recognize that we need to involve our volunteers in a different way than that old style. And I think that what we did tonight will go a long way to do that. On that note, we did approve the Vision and Goals February 7. And I'd still implore the city manager, I know now we have the communications firm, to come up with the strategies to accomplish these goals and to do that shortly.
If there are any other council comments, and then I'll remind folks about our study item. Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
Madam Mayor, I just have a few housekeeping items. Comment, I was glad to see the traffic committee tabled the speed limit on wattles again. That's a residential street, and we've all walked down it at one time or another, so we all know that. I wanted to publicly thank the mayor, Protam, for working so hard on all of those appointments. You, in essence, had to do two years' work in one week, and I appreciate it, having sat in that chair. I got an email last week that the AARP Tax Service that does taxes for seniors was told that they had to pay for a room at the community center. And I thought that we had discussed that this spring, and that was supposed to be offered gratis. So, Mr. Zerly, can you answer that or check on it or do something, please?
I'll do both. I'll give a partial answer, and then we'll follow up if the answer's not satisfactory to the city council. And that is that Mrs. Beltramini and myself spoke directly with then Recreation Director Stu Alderman last year about having space for individuals to have their taxes performed for free. And it was my understanding that a portion of the community center would be utilized at no charge for that service. Now, if I could have Mark and/or Jeff calibrate or subsidize or add to that response, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Baker? Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, the AARP Tax Aid for Seniors is allowed to use the community center. They do use the senior computer room as well as any open space that we might have for their clients to be checked in and to wait for an appointment with one of the tax assistants. We've also told them that on the morning that they show up, if we do have an open meeting room that's not being rented, that they can certainly use that for no charge.
So every, I think it's Fridays that they do it, or whatever day of the week they do it, from February to April, that service can be offered without the providers having to pay for a room?
That is correct. There will be open space, or if there is an available room that's not being rented that particular Friday, they will be given that meeting room as well.
They will always have the computer room?
Correct.
And other open space as available?
Yes, correct.
But there is one room virtually guaranteed to them?
Yes, the computer room.
Thank you.
At no charge?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other items? Okay, I remind council that after we take a brief recess, we're going to have two study items. The first one is Economic and Community Development Division Update and IMLA/ICMA Report, Troy City Attorney's Office. So we'll be in recess and reconvene in the other room for our study session.
We have everybody here for our study session, so I'll call in Mr. Zerly. Who told me, and I quote, "This is going to be quick."
My part will be quick.
I just couldn't resist.
No, this will be fast. I think probably under 20 minutes. And I was asked to provide essentially an update on all the divisions within the city of Troy. We have five now. And the one we wanted to highlight tonight was Economic and Community Development Division, which is under Mark Miller's purview of authority now. And essentially, okay, here I go, I think. Yes. Essentially, that includes the Engineering Department, the Library now that the village has passed, Planning Department, and Recreation Department, run of course by Steve Van Dett, Kathy Russ, Brent Savadat, and Jeff Vigler. Additionally, there are functional areas of Community Affairs that's run by Cindy Stewart, and then Economic Development per se, so that Mark has a double duty of being responsible for all the departments, as well as being directly responsible for economic development activities as well, in addition to myself and Brent. We also have public-private partnerships in this regard in this division. Building Inspection is Safebuilt, and Steve Burns is here. Sylvan Glen Golf Course is Billy Casper Golf, as well as Sanctuary Lake Golf Course. And those folks are not here, but that's okay. We also have public nonprofits within this division. The Lloyd A. Stage Nature Center is now taken over essentially by the Troy Nature Society. Museum and Historic Village is the Troy Historical Society. Wanted to go back in time. City Council knows this, but a lot of folks in the audience, and when this goes on camera, those may not know. The great strides that we have made and sacrifices by a lot of employees in the city of Troy by having to meet a reduced revenue line. And so what I asked staff to do was to take essentially our high point, which was fiscal year 2005-6, look at the full-time staff that we had, and compare that to the full-time staff that we have now. Take essentially the personal service cost, which is literally the kitchen sink for all employee-related costs. It's pay, it's benefits, it's indirect costs, everything involved in the payment for, or the cost of an employee is called personal service. I wanted those costs identified in real dollars for 2005-6, and then the personnel costs in real dollars that we have for this current fiscal year. This doesn't mean that it's going to be the savings, so that when you take the reduction in personnel costs for this year versus essentially six years ago, there's not a pile of money there that equals that difference, because we had to pay consultants like Safebuilt, like Billy Casper Golf, to help us produce or deliver those certain services. But I wanted to show how drastic the reductions have been made in this one area. With the Engineering Department, we essentially now have a hybrid department, meaning we use a combination of both in-house and consultants that are outside to help us run our $100 million rolling six-year capital improvements budget. In 2005-6, we had 23 full-time staff. We now have 13 full-time staff. And it's been a reduction essentially of 10 full-time people in that department, with the personal service savings of over $825,000. Next is the Library. We're very happy to have the voters approve a dedicated village for that respect, and Kathy and Mark will be working in that regard to make sure that we have great service, and also in conjunction with the resolution that was passed tonight, to assure that we have input from all facets of the community. Comparing the current library that we have, based on our revenue projections, our full-time staff in 2005-6 was 20. We're going to have six full-time people with the passage of the village. And it's a staff reduction of 14 people, essentially about a $1.2 million reduction in our personal service costs. Plan Department is also hybrid. We replaced three full-time planning staff with consulting services, saved about a quarter of a million dollars. There's also been new responsibilities transferred from Building Inspection, which is the zoning administrator, the ZBA code enforcement, the certified building official, and new responsibilities transferred from Historic Village and Museum. And so essentially, when you lump all those together, there's been a zero reduction in staff and about a $50,000 increase. Would like to point out, as the council knows, that we did about a year and a half ago bid out the service for code enforcement. And we were cost competitive in-house, so we were able to maintain our in-house personnel. And it was a high point for us in that regard. No offense, Steve, and Steve's doing a great job with Safebuilt, but we try to keep our in-house people working when we can. Recreation Department is now under Jeff Vigler, and we went essentially from 17 full-time people down to six. Staff reduction of 11 full-time people, personal savings, personal service savings of about $1.4 million. And essentially now, all the recreation programming is self-sufficient. There's no longer a general fund subsidy, with the exception of the debt service on the community center. And we transferred the responsibilities to the Department of Public Works for parts and maintenance. Would also like to mention that most of what you see here in this division were implementations made by staff prior to the ICMA recommendations. So we were well along the way, even before ICMA came in and did their analysis. Community Affairs, now a hybrid functions. We hired a communications strategy consultant, and went essentially from three full-time people to one full-time person, which is Cindy, and there's about a $230,000 savings from 2005-6 to present, just in personnel costs. Economic Development, Mr. Miller, and again, went from five full-time staff down to two. One thing we'd like to do, when Mrs. Pam Valenteck left, our Economic Development Specialist, we tried to find a hybrid solution for that position, spoke to Automation Alley to see if we could have a more of a regional aspect of this job, and was advised that we would be better off on our own in terms of making essentially cold, you know, cold knocks on doors for businesses, and having a specialist work just for Troy in terms of growing our current businesses. Mark's going to talk more on that later. But our intention is to replace that position in-house as an Economic Development Specialist. Building Inspection, we call it managed competition, and that's essentially when we determine our cost and deliver a service, go out in the private sector to see what that cost would be for the same types of services, and then determine if our employees can come close to that cost. They could not in terms of Building Inspection. And Safebuilt is doing an excellent job, I think twice now, or is it three times, Steve, where you hired an outside consultant to check your satisfaction?
Three.
Three times? And I think all three times have been, what, 98% satisfaction rating?
Yeah.
Which is excellent when you look at a department that essentially is there to tell you what you can't do, or what you have to do on your own property. That's an excellent response. And of course, the downside there is that we had to expunge 21 full-time people from that department. And in terms of personal savings, personal service savings costs, that was almost $2 million. The good news on this department, I don't think it's very good news for Steve. You can let me know, Steve, but our contract says that if you were to get $1 million of permit fees, that the city's share goes from 20% to 25%. And I think we're at $1 million now, aren't we?
Correct.
So that's good news. And also, we did not raise our building permit fees. And so we went essentially from a $5 million deficit when we had a full-time building department. When you took a look at what it cost to run the department against building permit fees, to now having 20 and 25% of those building permit fees go to offset the other costs that we have for the department. And that's a huge savings to the city. We also have managed competition with the golf course, and that is complete. Billy Casper Golf LLC has about 125, 130 municipal golf courses across the United States where they operate and manage golf courses. And in Troy, Michigan, Billy Casper Golf had their first in-road in the state of Michigan. And they're doing a very good job for us. Again, the downside there was that we had to eliminate five full-time staff. The personal service savings at that point was over $1 million. Same with the OEC, or the Lloyd A. Stage Nature Center, essentially expunged the entire department, and had a staff reduction of three people, now taken over with a public non-partnership in the Troy Nature Society. I believe they have a wine tasting gig coming up. Is it next week?
October 20th.
Okay.
20th?
20th?
A fundraiser, yeah.
So that'll be a commercial essentially to call my old friend Roger Kowalski and buy tickets from him, the wine tasting contest.
They have a website, too.
They do.
Yes, they can go to the website, contact it there.
Great. But feel free to call Roger Kowalski anytime, day or night, to purchase those tickets. We'll get the cell phone number, as well as his personal number, from Cindy Stewart.
He said that phone book, too.
Good, good. And again, the same with the Museum and Historic Village, is now a public nonprofit partnership. A lot of volunteers that were in the Troy Historical Society for decades are helping carry that now. And the sense of volunteerism for both the historic district, as well as the outdoor education center is just good to see. But we did lose two full-time staffers, about $280,000 in personal cost savings. And I'm done talking. Mr. Miller's going to finish this up. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, John. Good evening. What I'm going to talk about a little bit is about related economic development and how we have, we're creating an environment of investment, and we've sort of...
I'm sorry, Mark, please continue.
We created a solid base to continue forward. And I'd like to show you something, and I'm going to refer to these documents. These are all the things that we've prepared related to this. And I may look at these during the presentation. First, in 2006, excuse me, 2008, the city hired Zucker Associates from San Diego, California. Zucker Associates are experts in analyzing and making recommendations related to development approval. We did hire them, and they reviewed our development approval process from front end to finish, CBO. And they gave us over 100 recommendations. And in there, there's a checklist. If you go to Steve Burns' office, Brent's office, they have that list in their office, and they check off some of the things that they've done to accomplish it. I'm going to put you guys on the spot. Do you have one or two that you might want to mention that you've done?
The Planning Department has implemented a paperless, essentially a paperless, electronic planning commission and zoning board of appeals agenda. We accept electronic submissions, and the inspectors, the field inspectors for code enforcement. And the apartments have ruggedized laptops that are connected to our network real-time. They're able to input data and download and upload information. So there's three right there.
Speaking of, like...
I would just echo that was one of the big recommendations for the Building Department, too, is to have real-time inspection results in the field. That was one of the first things we implemented. All the inspectors use laptops out in the field with air cards that sync right to the city's software. So if some developer or builder were to call for status of any inspection or project that's underway, they can get those results in real time. That was a big recommendation of Zucker, as well as trying to streamline the plan review process. We implemented a few very simple things, assigning building permit numbers the minute they hit the counter, so we can track them better and meet our contractual obligated turnaround times for plan review. And then working, you know, with builders and contractors to streamline the process, to help them understand what we need to get those turnaround times in a much quicker fashion. And it's really paid big dividends for, all of our feedback we're getting is positive on the amount of turnaround time that they're seeing quite a difference over the way it used to be. And that's not to knock the way things used to be, it's just implementing a few small things can pay big dividends and make some good improvements to the development process, which goes along with what he's trying to accomplish with bringing business into the city.
Thank you, Steve. And what I think is interesting that Steve mentioned is that they have specific timeframes in which they're contractually obligated. We took the standards in which Zucker's system has developed over time, and we actually put them in our contract with Safebuilt, so they're contractually obligated to those national standards. I think an important point also that came out of there is that we transferred the zoning administrator duties to Brent Savadat in the Planning Department. You know, ultimately, there's just one thing I want to say that came out of the Zucker study, that under Mr. Zucker's research, is that developers are willing to pay for fast approval process. And it's just down the road, along this process, we wanted to try to move towards electronic permit approval, and those will take digital resources that we'll have to explore sometime in the future. Also, one thing related to that, I think I would like to, you know, we are going to look towards bringing how we utilize this building, and one thing that Zucker does recommend is a one-stop shopping, so that you have building, planning, and engineering in one location, because those departments really work together quite a bit. Also, in 2008, we, city adopted a new master plan, the first comprehensive rewrite since, I believe, 1965. First, what is a master plan? I'll give the 30-second, 20-second version. The master plan is a policy document to help guide the city in its development. It really is important in that it provides the basis for zoning. And I'm not going to read them, but there was, we provided the 10 tenants a smart growth in here, which I think are very important. There was considerable amount of community input. We utilized a very creative process called the escrat, which Carl Wartman helped us facilitate. Chapter nine is probably the most important part. It's land patterns. That really provides the future land use plan for the city to make the zoning decision we're talking about. And there are a couple of things related that were identified, and they're, I think, really important. It's, I think, there are 21 neighborhood nodes, Brent?
21, yes.
And the neighborhood nodes are major mile road intersections, and I kind of coined a phrase for these, or call, what I call areas of friction, because you always have the built-out neighborhoods, and then the area between the built-out neighborhoods and the existing commercial office. And there's always a contention on how to develop that, because developers always want to develop usually retail. And of course, the neighbors don't want anything to go there, but you know, that can't happen because they have development rights. But we, this document laid out specific traits for every single one of those nodes, and those were then carried through in the zoning ordinance. Also, what was really unique about this document and the future land use plan is we really spelled out different areas of the city, and we called them what they were, like Big Beaver Corridor. And then we gave specific attributes to Big Beaver Corridor. And Northfield was another example, where most other future land use plans would say low-rise office or mid-rise. But we recognize that areas in the city have specific traits, and we provided the zoning for them. Also in this document, we identified the future for form-based codes, which we'll talk a little bit about when we move to the zoning ordinance. What I think is really important is that when I hired, or was appointed planning director in 2001, the one thing that I felt was very important is that there be a master planning process. And the Vision 2020 did identify that. And also, there were recent amendments to state law which required municipalities to assess their master plan every year and determine it. And what I've really gained personally and professionally is that things take time. I mean, I identified that as a professional in 2001, and it took the 2008 to adopt a master plan, and 2011 to do the zoning ordinance. So sometimes things take time to get through that. So, talking a little bit about the zoning ordinance, I believe April 28, 2011, the zoning ordinance was adopted. And it's kind of funny, I'm holding this book, which is sort of inappropriate, because it was designed in the modern world, and I have seen this, people actually call it up on their smartphone and look up information. It was specifically designed for the web, and the document, I wrote a word down, I don't know if I should really use, but monumental in a sense that it's written in clear language... in a sense that it's written in clear language. You can maneuver it very well electronically. The graphics are top-notch. I've never really seen anything like it. And this is a fantastic tool. Brunt, as, as planning director, has people, you know, everyone knows in 2008 we had the crash and there was no one, no one coming in to this building to talk about development. And it's picking up considerably. But in that time, we did what, you know, they teach us in planning school, in the downtimes, get ready for when it changes. Do your planning. Do your new ordinances. Spend your time in it because when it gets busy, you don't have the time. Well, Brunt is meeting with developers or even like architects and engineers and he explains the new zoning ordinance to them. And they're like, wow, that's great. I didn't know that. And then there's just a wide variety. And Brunt, if you think of one example, feel free to interrupt me and comment if you want.
Well, I would just say that, I'll be, I'll be very brief, Madam Mayor, very brief. I mean, the, the, the most significant improvement of the zoning ordinance is expanding the range of uses permitted in non-residential districts. It basically provides opportunity. It's increased value of property. And it's given, it's letting, it lets owners, basically let the market dictate what is appropriate for many of these zoning districts. It's, you know, we've had, we've heard horror stories from property owners for years. And there's a, there's a real sense of relief when I, when I explain to many of these property owners about the new, about the new zoning ordinance. And it's, it's really a positive. And I've got a lot of, a lot of positive feedback from owners over the last couple of years, so.
Thank you, Brunt. Just really quick, I would be remiss to state that both the master plan and the zoning ordinance also preserve our existing neighborhoods. That's a very important goal there. I'm gonna sort of smooth over some of the next three topics. We obviously adopted a Big Beaver Corridor study, which was very important. It basically was a study to reignite the development potential of this premier district. And those findings were, are incorporated in our master plan. They're part of it. We also, and I won't really go into any detail with it, but we, we found that there was, we needed a link between the Big Beaver Corridor study and the zoning ordinance because we were gonna develop these form-based code elements for the Big Beaver District. So we also developed guidelines. Big Beaver, Big Beaver, I might get the name right. Big Beaver, Big Beaver Design Guidelines. That's what they're called. And so that provided direction when we developed the Big Beaver Zoning District, which has form-based code elements in it. And also, to be honest, helped with the 21 nodes. But what, you might ask, why, what else would this document be useful for? And what we find is most developers really want to build what the city and the community wants. You know, not 100%, but most do. So it's sort of, when someone comes to me or Brunt, we can give them, this is what we want. Because it actually lists, you know, some of the attributes in the, you know, because with this form-based code, we care, we care more about how the buildings fit in the community and the relationship to the street and in urban design context, which was a little different than old-fashioned suburban zoning. Suburban zoning didn't really consider that. Really suburban zoning was really to separate land uses. And there was no consideration of how things would look from an urban design standpoint. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. And finally, on this page, just talk a little, little bit about the transit center. I think that, you know, obviously you know that this is, we've executed the agreement with MDOT for the funding through, through the feds. And we're getting ready to issue the RFP for Architectural Engineering. And Steve, we're moving on.
It is issued.
It is issued right now. And then we're gonna follow up with a RFP for construction mandate or at risk. Is that the right term?
That's correct.
And that's gonna be a month or further away?
That'll be December.
December. So we're moving along on those projects, which we get a lot of good feedback. Any questions on, what this did is sort of set the template for economic development and is giving us a sort of a launch pad to go from. And if there's no questions, I'll go then, oh, sure.
A comment about the Zucker study. It is taught there. And I, and I do remember that pivotal moment where it changed our perception of the role of government here. It changed at that moment to what can we do to make this happen? And I remember that vividly. I remember the evening at our planning commission where Bob Schultz, our chairman at that time, had been interviewed that day and came and said it there, that we need to change from, well, you have to do this and this and this, to what can we do to make this happen? Other communities had been doing that. And that cultural change is a really important one. And I think it can't be minimized because it falls through everything else that you see there. The new change in Troy is what can we do to make it better? What can we do as a group, as a government, and as a community? And I think the Zucker study was that important, pivotal. So if people haven't read it, I know that I've talked about it nonstop for four years, but I think it's really an important piece. And I thank you, you were then Director of Planning, for what happened as a result.
Thank you.
And I want to comment that even though I jokingly teased Mr. Zerley when he said today it was gonna be really quick, I don't want to minimize the importance of all of these things that are listed here. This is a phenomenal list of things that have been accomplished over the years that is providing for the planning for the future. And it's always something that this community, even though we've had good things in place over the years, in fact, Troy's developed as it is because we had a good master plan to start with. But doing this even more in the zoning ordinance and a lot of hard work by a lot of people. So these kinds of things are going to be the tools that are gonna provide for the future for Troy and make us strong. And so I commend everybody that's worked so hard on all of this because I think it's just phenomenal. I really do.
And Your Honor, if I may add, and it's this type of philosophy that we have, citywide in general and with this division in particular, that'll help Kathy Russ go from the, to use Mr. Slater's terminology, old school to new school, because this is our new school division that we have in the city.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark, I wanted to ask, and I agree with both the mayor and the mayor pro town, all the work that's been done. And I commend you for involving the citizens in both the master land use plan and the zoning ordinance because I think that, too, will serve us well. My question is, and Brunt, you said that the developers have been very pleasantly surprised by how flexible and how well the ordinance works. What are we doing, and we've talked about this before, what are we doing to get that word out? I mean, we have the most cutting-edge zoning ordinance in the region right now. And outside of word of mouth, which, thank goodness, it's great, but what are we doing to really put that word out there, that it's easy to use and we're ready for business?
I think Mr. Zerley has something to say, but I know, Brunt, didn't you email all the designers and architectural engineering people if you had questions about it?
Absolutely. The, I think, I think, I agree with Mary. The, in terms of like more kind of grandiose, getting the word out there, you know, it's available on the website. But I think the most important tool, to be perfectly honest, is the cul, in combination with the culture change, is getting the word out there and educating and walking people through it. Could we, could we go a little, a little further in terms of maybe some, you know, public sessions or whatnot?
We're, we're, we're like, we'll help.
Go ahead, John.
I was gonna mention that. That's a great comment. And it's one of the objectives that we have with our communications consultant, to find the best venue to get the word out for, you know, to the development community. But we always, again, once we hire the economic development specialists, when we, we'll then re-initiate or reignite our roundtable discussions. That'll become part of our, our mantra to the existing businesses. And, you know, word of mouth is great. I'm not going to diss any of other sister cities around here, but I'm told time and time again that they prefer to build and develop in Troy, you know, and Mark is with me at most of those meetings. And, you know, the horror stories that I'm hearing from other municipalities is that they still have essentially building inspectors that are now down to counting nails and drywalls essentially to keep busy. And it's driving the developer and the builders crazy. We're here, again, it's, it's an environment of investment and we have a very high, high rating from the people that are being told what to do and what not to do on their property by our planning department, by our building department. It really is a partnership.
Thank you. I have two more slides and, and, did I go the wrong way? Must have, sorry. Why is Troy primed for economic guarding? This all set a basis of community infrastructure for the community. And on a quick note, I went to a training session last week about economic guarding put on by the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And to be quite frank, we're more knowledgeable on economic guarding in the state. And that's where we're going. The way that incentives are, they're not gonna be giving out tax credits. And what they're gonna be looking to do is they're promoting economic guarding. So we're, once again, on the front end of what's being required. And I said at some roundtable discussions with state staff and, and we're, I'll just say, we're further along than the state staff. So why are we primed? Well, one, the state of Michigan is moving in that direction. Two-thirds of all new jobs are created by small businesses. We, we, as Troy, have assets which are critical to the growth of the community. I mean, those assets are just so numerous, from roads, location, good police service, good fire service, a great community, a diverse population, a well-educated population. And that list can go on and on, why it's a good place to do business in Troy. And, you know, what we're focusing on this program is the second-stage companies, which are 10 to 100 employees that have the largest possible growth potential. And we, our initial research said there are over 900 businesses in Troy that fit that category. Just think about, if each of them just had one job, one, that's 900 jobs, almost 1,000 jobs. And, you know, that, this process will be the new economic development specialist's job to take care of day-to-day. What I think's important as part of our assets is that we're home to Automation Alley, Walsh College, and Fortune 500 companies. Now, the key elements that we, we need to take care of is that, why we went through that list was we've created an environment of investment. We've sort of set the table so that we can do this economic guarding. And they talk about, there are three pillars in economic guarding in their collaboration, oops, that's further down, I'm sorry. It's, never mind. I apologize. The three pillars are a little further down. But what's different about this process is that it's more about collaboration, both locally and regionally. This, the economic development specialists who we've worked on this day-to-day won't be expected to be an expert in all this. But what they do is they collaborate with other, other entities, the county, MEDC, Walsh College, Automation Alley. So we've set up an advisory committee and these organizations have agreed to it. One is a representative from Walsh College. Now, I don't know if you're aware, the Walsh College has a fantastic attribute. They have what's called the Walsh Institute. And I, I mean, I've come really to investigate this and find out they, they have an entrepreneurial sort of launch pad located right there to help train small business people. So they've agreed to help with that. Automation Alley has agreed to be part of that, that advisory committee, along with the Chamber of Commerce in Oakland County. And they will help the economic development specialists provide direction and advice in the process. Now, the, this is where I made my mistake. The public role focuses on what are called the three pillars of economic guarding. It's information, infrastructure, and connections. And what this economic guarding is more about is information in that the small business people need, have needs and love and relate it to information. And we can help them get that information or provide the connection to get the information. And, or collaboration. And then the infrastructure pillar is not just your simple infrastructure, roads, fire, but it's also is creating the, they call the sense of place. And I know MML is really furthering that. But it's important to create a place where people want to be and where they want to go. And I'm gonna go back to a slide that Mr. Zerley showed on the dashboard about how we're losing young professional-age people, 24 to 34. I mean, part of that in this today's world is that people go where they want to live, not where the job is. And it's a different, it's a different time. So we have to be cognizant of that and continue to improve. And just really quick, we have some good successes. Granite City Brewing and Food is about to break ground out in front of the old top of Troy. We have the Alter High-Bread Bus. AluminaSys is expanding in their LED lighting. And recently, CareTech Solutions announced all the job creation they've had. And they've just had an open house last week. And that is my presentation. And I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. This is all good stuff. I'm certainly going in the right direction. But do we have any key measurement indicators where we're tracking the number of businesses that we're tracking, that we're coming into Troy versus against the businesses that have left over the past year? And what is that net number?
We don't have that exactly. But what we are working on is what's coming in and trying to get a handle on that.
Mark, our assessing department may have that information.
Mm-hmm. We'll, we'll work with them, see if they, they have that, you know, what businesses have left.
Anybody else have a question? Thank you. Very good job. And next, we have our city attorney, Ron Craig Bloom, who's gonna present it to us. Do you want to stand and say for us?
Mark, you can dismiss your stand if you like. It's up to you.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm a champion.
Well, he's got his tie on. What's the score?
2-2.
2-2?
Put anything.
2-2?
Fourth thing.
I think we're getting reports like we're supposed to.
There you go. Did you give her that?
You know, uh.
If you want sweet talk, Martin is taking the don't, you can go home, too.
Sweet talk.
Good talking to me.
Yeah, I thought he was, I thought he was good.
I was gonna add that to my book.
I passed him.
Someone got distracted.
It was distracted.
And it wasn't driving.
Well, there's some over there, but Wade's not sending them on.
Oh, did everyone get one of the handouts?
Not yet.
Did you make a copy for everyone? And I do have a couple more up here if, if we need them.
Thanks, Mark.
Be back in a minute.
Oh, maybe it'll lead everybody to get them.
Uh, it leads on, Chief, can I see with this?
Yeah.
Chief needs one.
Oh, yes.
Chief, did you get one?
All right. Well, I want to thank you for giving us a chance to kind of go over what, what we think was a very wonderful report. It was done by the ICMA and IMLA. And we really haven't had a chance to talk about our department. As you know, we are the only other department that reports directly to you as counsel. And so I thought this was a great opportunity to just kind of go over some of the things that were highlighted in the ICMA and IMLA report. And also to just explain to you what it is that we do as a department. And I'm very proud of all the accomplishments of our team. And again, I think the efficient and effective representation, you're gonna see that that was the conclusion that ICMA and IMLA came to. And that's what our credo is. And that's what we try and do. This is our conclusion. And I'm always putting the conclusion first because I know it's a little bit late. And, and so I wanted to make sure that you get the conclusion. And the conclusion basically is that the cost of the city attorney services appear generally lower than the rates for the legal services in the community. Also that the cost of the services are substantially lower than comparable costs for insurance defense. And that there's, there are efficiencies and advantages of in-house services which outweigh the advantages of outsourcing. And I just wanted to let you know, the ICMA, ICMA asked the IMLA to partner with them. And the IMLA's credentials, they were founded in 1935. And there are 2,500 member communities that belong to this organization. It is an international organization and has significant communities that are members of it. And the process that they went through, I'm not gonna read these all because you all have the handouts. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But basically, the first part of what they did was the assessment. Our department is a little unusual. Not all city attorneys' offices are in-house. We are in-house. And so assessment was critical because, as you know, for example, Sterling Heights, they have outside counsel that handles their city attorney's work. Farmington Hills is another community that handles their outside work. Their Livonia has an in-house city attorney's office, Dearborn, Warren, and there are several, several others. I could go on and on, but I won't. But, but the thing that was very difficult was that for each of those in-house departments, they do different things. So it's very difficult to, to do this assessment, and it, and it was something that ICMA and IMLA had to work very hard to try and find comparables to do this assessment. They did their evaluation, however, and basically they were trying to find out whether the function or activity needs to be done, and if it's not done, what are the consequences? Whether the function can be done better or less expensively by the private sector or another entity, and also to determine the consequences if we did eliminate, outsource, or reduce the service. There were 34 functions that were identified as mandated services. By mandated services, those are the charges that I have that are set forth in the city charter, the code, or, or the, or other law. There were only seven departmental functions on the whole ICMA, IMLA list that were administrative or just essential services that are still being performed. And I think this is really important, too, because the number, the percentage of the regular work hours that are devoted to administrative or non-mandated services, .0050 percent. That is nominal. And so I think that's important for people to know, that we're really not doing a whole lot of administrative services, we're really focusing on legal representation. Our departmental budget for this next year is a little over $1 million. Eighty-two percent of that is personnel. We also have things like our, our tools, which are the research, the law books, that's a large percentage. Also, we have witness fees, we have outside counsel, things like that are incorporated into our million-dollar budget. We currently have seven full-time, actually, right now, we have six full-time employees. Since April, we've had six full-time employees. We are in the process of hiring another individual, and we're very happy about that. But this is down from our high point. We were at eight-five, 8.5, and so this is a reduction, and, you know, we are doing, we're prioritizing, and we're managing with the staff that we have now. We're hoping, again, the seventh person will help us to manage a little bit better even, and to get to some of those things that we've not had a chance to, to get to. Basically, using the seven full-time employees, we have one legal secretary and office coordinator. We have two paralegals who primarily focus on the criminal prosecution work, and we have four attorneys. Now, the regular base hours, the 14,560, that does not include the overtime for the attorneys, and that is, I can tell you, it is regularly required, and we don't receive any overtime for that. This is right out of the ICMA, IMLA report, and I'm not going to read all of it because it's, again, quoted, but we are very, very pleased with the conclusion that they had reached and the statements that they had made. And just based on the size of the city and its various operations, the city operates the attorney's office at a barely sustainable level, but it is sustainable, so we thought that was pretty good. But most importantly, the available data does not support outsourcing the city's legal services at this point in time. Before I talked about the 34 functions which were mandated, the city charter sets forth what those mandated functions are, and that's in the, in the presentation in the handout, so I won't go over all of them. In fact, I won't, I'll just kind of click through them, and if you have any questions, let me know. I know people want to go and, and watch the Tigers game right now, so. I've summarized them, though, and it's to defend the city when it's sued, to file lawsuits on behalf of the city, to prosecute misdemeanor criminal cases, to provide advice and legal counsel to all other city departments when requested, prepare or review ordinances, contracts, bonds, et cetera, to keep updated, and to educate and inform city officials and employees as to changes in legislation or case law. That's a lot of time to do that, because there are a lot of bills that go with the, with the, the state legislature and also the federal legislation. We have to keep on top of all of that in addition to the city legislation. So that, that's a time-consuming duty and responsibility. And then anything else that council directs me to do, because you are my bosses, and I take direction from you as city council. The prosecution, it's 45 percent, approximately 45 percent of what we do is the criminal prosecution. This includes the prosecution function, but also doing the, the warrants and doing the citizen complaint process, and basically just being prepared, representing the people of the city of Troy. And again, that's about 45 percent of what we do. And right now, there are three judges, and we have a lot of increasing motions. We've been finding that there are a lot of people that are filing criminal motions, and so that workload has increased. One of, I think, one of the services that we offer is that we assist victims when they are victims of crime. We are there as a liaison, we represent their interests, domestic assault, for example, if it's a shoplifting victim, anything like that, we will try and obtain restitution on their behalf as well, try and make them as, as whole as you can. Obviously, if they've been a victim of crime, they're not going to be completely whole. We use our paralegals for maximum efficiency, and that was something that was done before I came to the office in 1995, and it has resulted in efficiencies, and it's, they, they do a great job. The hourly rate was calculated by ICMA and IMLA. It's $83.03 an hour. That is almost unheard of. If you, you know, and that was just taking our budget and dividing it up by, by the attorneys. And that's just using the base time. It's not using the overtime, it's not using any of the other, any of the, of the other factors. And obviously, there are bids that have been in surrounding communities, and they all have much higher rates than the $83.03. One of the things, too, that, that this report was done to decide whether or not outsourcing was an option, and the conclusion was it's not, but another reason is, is one of the intangibles. And with criminal prosecution, there is kind of a, a domino effect. And I liked the, the statement from ICMA and IMLA, says that if the prosecuting attorney in private practice receives the same pay regardless of how much time the attorney spends in prosecuting, prosecuting the cases, the attorney has an incentive to conclude the prosecutions quickly. And I think that that's very true. If you pay them, you know, there are different arrangements, but generally, if you pay them for just a, a set amount, a standard fee, there's not as much incentive to represent the victims and to, to vigorously pursue these cases. Also, there are domino effects for the, the crime. I mean, if you don't have the prosecution supporting what the police department is doing, then, then that's going to, that's going to have effects on, on that function as well. Another function is the defense of the city, and examples of these, and you get the quarterly litigation reports every, every quarter, so you know what, what types of cases we do, but zoning challenges, civil rights cases that are filed against police officers or other persons, contract disputes, personal injury cases, trip and fall cases, sidewalk cases, automobile accidents, things like that. Again, one of the things I think that IMLA and ICMA found out is that it's really difficult to, to control this, because it's all speculative. You're all guessing about what, what the amount of cases are going to be. You never know how many people are going to sue you. But we do estimate that it's 20% of our total department's function that's spent on the defense of the city. And we did discuss briefly that the MMRA, who is our insurance carrier, they could have their attorneys representing the city in some of these types of cases. Not all of them, but some of them. But their fee is $135 an hour, and that's a significantly reduced fee as well, at 135 an hour. And again, our in-house rate is 83.03, so that's a significant savings for us to have it done in-house. MMRA itself has, has indicated that we benefit, the city benefits, from having our inside legal services. And we have a great relationship with MMRA. They respect us. We have been able to get verdicts that were significantly more advantageous than what the MMRA thought that, that we could get. So that's been, that's been a great result. And outsourcing this function would be very difficult. It's not just a matter of the dollars, but there are also intangibles that you get from the city attorney's office. For example, there's the SafeBuild case right now. The home builders have, have filed a lawsuit against us, and it's wonderful when I can walk down the hall and I can get that documentation, and they know who I am, and I don't have to review the whole history. I don't have to review the contract because we reviewed the contract before. So there are some efficiencies that are built in there that, again, are intangibles, and, and you just can't compute them with dollars. Another function is to represent the city as plaintiff, and basically, what you tell me to do, I will do, and I will represent your interests and do what you want me to do. Plaintiff's cases have been, like, the condemnation cases, environmental matters, an NPDES stormwater permit, sometimes we have to be involved in those types of cases, cable matters, miscellaneous, dangerous buildings. Sometimes we've had dangerous buildings, and we've needed to file lawsuits to, to, to get that dangerous condition abated. All kinds of things that, that we're asked to do, and the, I, we estimate it's 10% of our departmental function that we do for that. And again, the, our hourly rate is $83.03. The lawyer's weekly median litigation rate is $195 an hour. If you're looking for additional expertise, it is going to be greater than that. It can be 300, $400 an hour for attorney legal rates. Again, it's, I, I've kind of gone over these before, but trying to figure out what types of cases you're going to have to file as a plaintiff, it's, it's very difficult, and it'd be very difficult to draft a proposal and to get somebody to bid on that, to do those types of cases. Another thing, too, is those types of cases are ones where, again, I liked the, the language, they involve tactful consideration and treatment of the defendant. In many circumstances, that's, that's what you have, and, and when it's largely publicized, you try and minimize the publicity as, as much as you possibly can in those types of situations, and having an in-house department that allows us to do that. Advising city officials and employees. About 25% of what we do is devoted to advising city officials and employees, and that's pretty much the, the miscellaneous, is everything else that we do. It's the drafting of the ordinances or reviewing of the contracts, it's attending all of the council meetings and all of the board meetings that we attend to, it's doing the training of city officials, it's doing the resource booklets, it's providing resources for the public and also for other departments. And believe me, it is a revolving door in our office. We get inquiries daily, whether it's from citizens, whether it's from media, whether it is from other departments, especially the police department. There's, there are a lot of police officers that, you know, have a well, well-worn path into, into our office, and, and that's a great thing. It's proactive, it's risk mitigation, and we encourage that, and that's something that you're able to have with an in-house city attorney's office. And I've kind of already gone over this, the final conclusion here. Really, there's no advantage to outsourcing it, and you have other efficiencies that you can't, that you haven't taken into account. Again, I'm trying to get through all of these, but one of the, the tasks of the ICMA, IMLA report was to decide whether or not our office was sustainable. And I love the picture in the bottom, and any of you who've been in my office probably think it looks fairly familiar, because my office many times does look like that. But the good news is that the ICMA, IMLA has decided that we are sustainable with the seven employees. If you, but they did say that we're not doing some of the things that they think we should do. We're not doing all of the risk mitigation that we could be doing. Some city programs may be underserved, but again, you know, we're, we're trying to prioritize, we're, we're doing well with what we have, and we're trying to meet the needs of the city and trying to follow the direction of city council in, in that prioritization. These are just some other intangibles. If you hire out a firm, you've got some conflicts of interest that you need to avoid. If you have in-house attorneys, my sole client is the city of Troy. Conflicts of interest are never going to be a problem. Also, institutional memory. I've been with the city attorney's office since 1995, and I am not the longest-serving person in the office. We do have others who have been there longer than I have been, and there are things that do come up. It's cyclical sometimes. And many times, it's been great because an issue has come up, and, and I'm able to say, oh, remember when we did this? Or a consent judgment, example is a consent judgment. And the person came in, they needed to amend the consent judgment, but they didn't know what the name of it was, they couldn't remember the case, they didn't even know when it happened. They were able to tell me just a couple of things, and then we were able to figure out, oh, yes, it's this case, and that was a development. It was a modification to an economic development that, because you had the institutional memory, that, that greatly assisted this economic development.